The non-human capital, right? So I identify these as human capital because this kind of directly affects individuals. Next, the non-human capital. So we've gone through software and we're reducing software where we can. So Forecast 5, School Dude, our Panorama Climate Survey. That's our climate survey that we've had for the past couple of years. We think that we can do it in-house. We know we can do it in-house with tools that we already have. All right? Technology purchases, right? So that includes, you know, reducing the number of interactive displays that we're going to order. So those types of equipments. Data reporting mentorship. So this past year, we did participate in our mentorship program so that the person reporting the data, we got up to speed on what exactly they need. So we will not need that next year, so we're taking that out. We went through our supply and material lines, reduced those. Our equipment lines, reduced those where we could. Private school transportation. So our director of transportation said that if we reroute the busing going to our private schools by bringing everybody to the high school campus first, that there's a savings there. So we are planning on doing that next year. So it's not going away, it's just a rerouting. Changing backup phone systems. We're looking at everything across the board as to where we can save money. And then using current resources for one-time purchases. So you've heard me talk about the AC needs. So next, the law was passed that if our classroom is 82 degrees, you have to take proactive measures to cool it, right? Open windows, turning lights off. It says opening doors, but that goes against our safety plan. So we'll have to address that. And if it's above 88 degrees, you cannot occupy the space. So we indicated that would be about $50,000 per spare commission units for that. So instead of purchasing them next year, we're going to purchase them this year while we have resources right now. So we're kind of shifting that cost where we can.
Dan? Do you want us to ask questions as you go along?
You can ask.
Okay. Just with regards to the coaching reductions. Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you.
I want to be able to.
Yeah, make sure you, make sure the microphone.
Yeah, people are online. I mean, even if there isn't anybody online, but the recording doesn't pick it up if you're not in the mic.
Is that working now?
Yeah.
Just with the coach, you said that modified, you only had eight students this year. What if there's a big influx next year? If we cut down coaches and then there is an influx of wrestling participants next year? Like what, how would that impact us? I mean, would we just still try and run it with one coach or? And same with the football program. Like has there been a decline in the program over time that we can expect that to continue? That we're comfortable reducing the coaches or?
Sure, so good question. So I've spoken with athletic directors about both of those. And they are comfortable based on the numbers of athletes and kind of tasks that coaches typically do. They're comfortable with reducing the football down to six and the modified down to one. If we do get a big influx of, say, 25 kids or 30 kids, right? Then we may have to next year appropriate, you know, money for an additional person. So financially wise, it's probably only $4,000.
Thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Oh, sure. Okay. Just a question about the private school transportation rerouting. So kids would come here, they would transfer onto another bus and then they would be taken to wherever. Is it going to add a significant amount of time for them being on the bus?
I don't have the exact number of minutes. I can get those for you though.
Okay.
But other districts do do that. I'm aware of other districts that transport them all to one central location.
Yes, yes, yes.
I know New Pauls they did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They did in Roundup Valley too.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, Roundup.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I would like to know how early they would have to start getting on the bus in order to transport to the high school and then?
Yeah, so they would actually get in on the high school run. So they would get when the high school students come in.
Okay. Okay, at the same time. Okay, got it.
But I'll double check and get numbers. Okay, any other questions?
What's the number of staff like we had in the 2024-25 year?
So instructional?
Sort of like 24 FTE, that's a lot. I'm just sort of curious. I know it was last year, yeah. Oh, yeah, 23-24 year.
So I mean, does it all number of?
I'm wondering what the kind of percentage of staff.
With everybody? We are, we're under, I think we're under like 500. I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head, so I get that.
I'm curious because that's a big number.
And it's also, just when we talk about staff, it's also, you could have two people filling one FTE position. So it's the number of individuals hired could be different than the actual FTE if you go ahead and calculate them that way. All right. Just to highlight once again, certified administrators is always comes up everywhere I am. So from last year to this year, once again, just showing that there will be, there are three constant administrative positions. We are director of HR, elementary primary coordinator, and our athletic director, assistant principal. Right now, our athletic directors are a stagnant position on top of their daily duties. Right, that's where we would be moving forward to next year as well. All right. Proposed additions, right? We are still focusing on providing the best education that we can for our students. So we're still focused on our blueprint, right? So we do need to add things. Human capital, English as new language. We're proposing increasing from a .4 position currently to a 1.0 FTE, right? It has to do with the number of students that we have and grade levels and finding the federally required number of minutes for our students. Modified sports, right? Our community was very generous this past year to reinstate modified sports, but we are proposing to reincorporate it back into our budget. Here is our elementary certified teacher that kind of swaps out the one from the previous page. We need to create a third section of sixth grade at Cahill so that we maintain our staff to student ratios. Part-time nurse at Woodstock. Previously, we had been providing funds for a nurse. Now we need to provide an actual physical person of our employees to there. So while it's not necessarily a big cost difference, it's an additional staff person. Part-time social worker. Woodstock day school has also requested social workers. We need to supply a social worker there as well.
And Dan, just on those, it's more of a clarification sort of. Those two things, when you know people see Woodstock day school, we have to do those two things.
Correct.
It's not like we're being nice to Woodstock day school.
No.
Like we have to.
So yeah, so there are certain things that if a private school asks us for, we have to provide at an equivalent, what's the phrase? Equivalent, we have to provide equivalent services what we have in the district.
Got it, okay.
So there is a calculation that goes into it and says, you know, they have to be there for two and a half hours.
Two and a half hour, whatever, okay. Thank you.
Special education continuum. As Jamie shared last presentation, and I'll share in the next slide, right? We're going to be changing some special education things we think for the better to provide more services to our students in a more constant and continuous fashion. Other additions, right? The I-Park lease, which I've talked about, right? It's amazing opportunity for our students. There is an additional cost for osteosarcoma through that. The cell phone ban, right? So indication of that, it will be incorporated to the budget. So we do have, we did allocate funds where we do choose to go with patches for students. Field trips, which our PTAs did an amazing job this past year and went over and above. We did incorporate that back into the budget as well as just general professional learning needs, right? So you've heard Dr. G talk about our science of reading, right? We need to continue to make progress towards that. We need to continue to work on restorative practices, on trauma-informed instruction, right? On all those research-based instruction.
Dan, could you go back? And I broke my own rule of not asking a question into the microphone so people could hear. Like if I take the cell phone ban, right? So that is something that is in the proposed governor's budget, right? Of doing something around cell phones. If we allocate it in our budget and then the state budget has funds for that, we'll see. we'll see that as a surplus in our budget?
Yes, so that'd be actually, so at the end of the year theoretically it'd be unspent and it wouldn't.
Got it.
Go back on this slide.
Re-allocate it to something else if we needed to as the board, if you brought it to us. Okay, perfect.
Dan?
Yes?
Just going back to the prior slide where we talk about the athletic director position. What about the, does the district need a director of health? Is that a mandated position?
The district is required to have a director of physical education, which is different than the athletic director.
Right.
So we have a person who receives a stipend for that currently.
Okay. And is that going to continue this year? Is that?
Has to.
That has to continue, but that's also contractual.
So when we say two assistant principals at the secondary campus, we really only, currently only have one.
Full-time assistant principal. We have one assistant principal who's also fulfilling that role of the director of physical education.
I would phrase it differently. I would consider them two full-time assistant principals with one having additional responsibilities.
Got it, okay.
That makes sense.
Yep.
Thanks.
Other things in the budget which I've shared previously is adjusting our hourly rates for our non-aligned titles. So monitors and some of our substitute titles up by fifty cents each. And then just to highlight changes in education that we're proposing as well. So currently in, you want to share, Jamie?
Sure.
Pass.
Putting me up.
For a great year, I guess.
He tossed that potato quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, so for next school year, instead of having co-teach just in, let's say, starting in third grade technically, we're going to have it throughout basically. So you'll have co-teach in your math and ELA classes. And then science and social studies will be supported by a teaching assistant. And that'll be kind of across the board. And then we're going to add in the junior high, a class for our academic behavior communication academy, which really focuses on our neurodiverse students so that they can stay here with us in district and get a smaller class setting and meet their educational needs. There are students that are just moving up from Cahill. They've already been in that program for a long time. So we certainly have enough students to fill the program to not have to pay to send them out of district. I think those are the highlights.
Just also to kind of reemphasize, so currently this school year in grades five and six, there is co-teaching in math, ELA, science, and social studies. So what's happening now is students, you know, in grades three or four receive co-teaching two periods, or I'm saying in periods, but for two subjects. Then they get to five and six, get all four. And then they go to junior high and only get it in math and ELA again. So this provides more continuous flow while also providing more support at the primary levels for that. Okay? We would like to include another possible capital outlet project next year. So this year, we're going to propose multiple things. And then with our design team and our facilities team kind of hammer down one specific one to go with. Additional flooring in our classrooms, which we've been working on at Riquardi. Additional ADA egresses. Just as a side note, we did go out to bid for these two egresses. We did not get any bids. So we're working on trying to recruit other individuals to reopen the bid. Ramp upstairs, so there was, she was sharing with us that, right? This, the old Riquardi is not accessible, right? Because of the stairs. So if we can, we're going to explore the possibility of putting an ADA compliant ramp. That may be challenging with door placements. And then the other option that the facilities team came up with is also the ductless AC. So it's like some form of mini-split in some of those classrooms to comply with the AC mandate. Okay? Items maintained in the proposed budget, right? There is a slew of items that are maintained. Here are some of the, just some of the highlights, right? So similar class sizes, right? So yes, there's always variations in class sizes depending on the size of that group, where people live and so forth. But what I'm saying is that overall, if we maintain the staff that we're proposing, we should have pretty consistent class sizes, right? Yes, I'm going to say it now, once again, there will be a class of maybe twenty-nine kids or thirty kids and then another class of twenty-two. But overall, right, the average class size should be there. Especially when we get to the high school, right? If there's an elective and there's, you know, fifty-eight kids, right? You're going to have two classes of thirty and twenty-eight perhaps, right? So it's all driven by that. And then there'll be other sections that will be larger. It maintains a social worker in each building, right? This is a big one for student needs. School psychologist in each building. It maintains art security and recruiting more at Cahill on our secondary campus. Current levels of art, music library. It will maintain our four Wilson trained reading specialists that we have. Our school advocacy specialists, our professional learning opportunities, as well as extracurricular activities, okay? Right, there's many more, just wanted to bring out some of the highlights. Okay? So this gets us to our numbers. So without going line by line, because we went through kind of in great detail last month, our twenty-five, twenty-six anticipated expenditures is down to seventy-nine point nine million, okay? That's taking out those additional reductions from the last time we met because last time we met it was eighty point something, okay? So this is where we are now. Last year's approved budget was seventy-seven million for an increase of two point six million or three point four nine percent, okay? Now, just as a frame of reference, last year's budget was increased just under six million dollars or eight point four percent, okay? So overall, we're in a much better pattern than we were last year.
And I'm guessing the ten percent, almost eleven, or ten and a half percent change in sports is simply because we didn't have modified sports in the budget?
Yes.
Even though we got money for it, that's why that number, that six sixty didn't include.
Correct.
So it's not like we're adding seventy grand.
No, it's not like we're adding a whole new sport, extra transportation.
Got it, okay. Perfect, thank you.
That's a good point. All right. Tax cap calculation, anticipated revenues. We've gone through this before. Go through in detail if you want, but I'm assuming you don't, right? So takeaway is roughly forty-seven point three million in, if you go to the tax limit cap. That's an increase of one point five seven million or a change of three point four three percent, okay? Oftentimes, well, this, right, is asked, what is that going to do for my taxes, right? So this slide shows that. This, before we go over it, right? This is based off current assessments, right? Around budget time, the town sororities usually sends out new assessments, all right? So this is off current assessments as they are right now. It's also based on the current equalization rates. So that could change depending on your municipality. Sororities, town sororities has been at a hundred percent equalization rate for the past several years for that. So currently, the tax rate for a thousand is twelve dollars and fifty cents, twenty-six ninety, twenty-six six, sixty-two. Just as a frame of reference, right? These are different because their equalization rate is very different than sororities, okay? So annual taxes based on a house assessed at three hundred thousand dollars, that is not the median house in sororities. I do not know what the median house in sororities is. We picked three hundred thousand dollars because I thought it would be easier to scale up and scale down, right? Depending where you are, okay? So annual taxes right now would be three thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars for three hundred thousand dollars. The new tax rate would be estimated, right? This is purely estimation based on those caveats that I said, would be twelve dollars and ninety-four cents or three thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars for a change of a hundred twenty-nine dollars, okay? So if your house is assessed at three hundred thousand dollars in the town or village of sororities, right? Your tax bill would estimate, right? An estimate of the increase would be a hundred twenty-nine dollars. So if you had a six hundred thousand dollar home, right? It'd be two sixty roughly, okay? Change per month, ten dollars and seventy-five cents. Same scenario with town of Woodstock and Ulster for that. I'm going to say it for like tenth time, right? This is purely estimates based on what the information that we have right now. This will change depending on the town assessments, equalization rates, and everything else, okay? Other state aid that we've talked about. Many of these numbers, these numbers have all stayed the same for right now from our last presentation. The state budget is still not passed, so we still don't have exact information, right? So it could benefit us a little bit or it could actually take some money away from us, okay? Went through these slides last time. All right. Here's our revenue kind of all together now. We've got our tax levy, we've got our foundation aid, our expense-based aid. Those are those things that we get reimbursement from after we expence, right? So we get, after we pay for transportation, we get money back the following year. Above-seas refund, health and welfare services, and day school tuition. Medicaid. Medicaid is the one that primarily changed from last time. We had it estimated at two hundred ten thousand. Mike and Michelle, we're comfortable increasing it out to three hundred thousand based on our current success, I will say, in getting documentation in, okay? So this gives us, without the reserves and fund balance, just like last time we left that spot, Brian, for now, seventy-seven million dollars. Similar to what we showed last time, here is our revenue breakdown. It's very similar to last year, so up here, corner here is last year. Here's where we are right now. If we were to appropriate reserves and fund balance, then these little budgets would change slightly. So we'd be pretty close. So seventy-seven in anticipated revenue, seventy-nine point nine million in proposed budget gives us a difference of two point eight million dollars, okay? So right now, without appropriating anything else, there's a gap of two point eight million dollars. Just like, just as we talked about last time, there are things we can do to either increase revenue or reduce expenditures, right? So if we increase our revenues, we examine our anticipated revenues, right? Which we've done, have been continuously done, and we made adjustments based on that. We'll talk about use of fund balance and reserves in a second. And also propose a tax levy that exceeds the tax cap, right? That's one possibility. Reductions. Purchase one-time expenses with current resources, right? So that's kind of our AC purchases. Differ expenditures to future budgets, right? So instead of replacing technology this year, see if we can push it out in a couple of years. Reducing services, reduce program and opportunities for students, and then review title fund expenditures, right? So are there things that we could take advantage of through title funds? Kind of free up money as well, so kind of shift where the things are, okay? So reserves and fund balance. So here are our current balances as of today, okay? Our proposal, my proposal, would be to use the unassigned fund balance of two point eight million dollars to make the gap this year, okay? Now, last year, you recall, we used some employee retirement reserve, some teacher retirement reserve, and then unassigned fund balance. This current school year, right? We should not be using much of that three million dollars primarily because we got the insurance de-hick holiday, which was a million dollar savings there, right? So there's unused money that we allocated this year. Now, this year, right now, we're suggesting to use unassigned fund balance because as Jamie shared previously, we're still waiting for our general liability insurance to come through. So we do have money allocated in the budget for general liability insurance. But if we were needed to self-insure, then we as a district would have to put money into an insurance reserve, right? You can put up to three percent of your budget in that insurance reserve. So if we needed to do that, then the recommendation from me in business office would be then to see where we could take money out of the other reserves to fund that insurance reserve. So that is the rationale right now as to why we're just recommending to use our unassigned fund balance, okay? And speaking with Michelle, the board can also elect to shuffle things around later on as well, okay? But right now, it's recommended to use our unassigned fund balance. Okay? So revenue projections, just filling in the box. So now we get to that seventy-nine, or yeah, seventy-nine point nine million dollars, okay? Another option, which was brought up last month, and I addressed it before as well, is going above the tax cap, right? So what happens if we go above the tax cap by five hundred thousand dollars? So that's what this slide shows. Now, if we were to do that and it was successful, right? Then we would appropriate less out of the fund balance. That would be my recommendation, okay? Once again, these numbers are strictly based on current assessments, current equalization rates, right? So if the board didn't want to do that, and we would have to get super majorities, we'd have to get sixty percent, not just fifty percent plus one, right? Have to get sixty percent. We would, it would increase one hundred seventy dollars versus the one ten where it was before.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-nine.
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 Yeah.
Right, so it makes it look better. Four dollars. All right, that's a house at three hundred thousand dollars. Okay? Are there any questions on that?
If the, so if the state budget passes and we get less than we expect, what buffer do we have to? Do we then have to, are we cutting positions once that gets, you know? Are we cutting stuff once that comes in and we have less than we expected? Or, I mean, like, what's our buffer against that?
Sure. So when, as Dr. Tim said, when you plan a budget, right? You do want to have like the one point five million cash flow, I think.
Right, right.
Right, and currently we have three STA positions budgeted in this for upcoming years, right? So if the budget, or when the budget comes out and there are cuts or significant cuts, right? Then we have to see what time of year it is and then make that determination if we appropriate stuff out of reserves, out of additional out of fund balance, or we make cuts mid-year like happened, was that fifteen years ago or something, I think? So that there is that possibility as well, okay? In addition, right, we could also look at other cuts, right? So when we talk about cuts, it's what things are required to have as a school district, right? So we are required to have certified teachers in front of our students, right? With certain ratios going on. So when I say mandated stuff, it's stuff that we need to operate the school, right? So where we look to is those quote-unquote non-mandated things, or things that we're not required to have. So as we've shared previously, right? There are the things that we've talked about in the past, right? It is our armed security, whether it be SRO or Atlas Security, right? It's not required. But it has become a custom in our building, right? But it's not required, that's one of the things our community had asked for, right? Athletics, not required. Modified athletics, not required. Athletic trainer, not required. Club stipends, not required. Social worker in each building, psychologists, secondary core teachers. Yes, we can reduce, right? But on the flip side of that, our class sizes will go up, opportunities for kids will go down, right? That's just a math game. And then department chair persons, right? They're not required, but they provide a big benefit to our departments, okay? Other things, our advocacy specialist, elementary art, elementary library, field trips, instructional coach, part-time counselor, elementary music, right? Once again, New York State says in order to provide an education, New York State, you need to meet these minimums, right? These are the items that are not part of that minimum, okay? But I think every one of us, right, can attest that our art program is very limited as it is, right? And those are some of those passions that our kids have. So my recommendation, right, would be to vote for, approve a budget for seventy-nine point eight million dollars. Appropriate that two point eight million dollars out of fund balance for the upcoming school year, okay? So that would be my recommendation, right? The board could of course have a conversation if they want to go to the tax cap. And we would reduce this number, right? Or if they're directly to find additional cuts, we can do that as well. Just to round things out, right? What happens if the budget does not pass on May twentieth, right? So we could revote on June seventeenth. It could be the same or different budget. Or we can adopt a contingency budget. If the June seventeenth budget goes down, then we have to go to contingency. The tax levy stays at the same as it was this past year. And there would be really devastating cuts at that point that we would not have a choice for. Right, no new equipment, administrative components capped, no capital outlet project. Public use of our buildings is no longer free. We'd have to charge a fee for all those. And then non-essential building maintenance as well. That's just kind of the highlights of that, okay? Timeline, today is the day where the board has to adopt a budget to go before voters on May twentieth. The public hearing is May sixth. Board vote is May twentieth. May twenty-seventh, we cap count the affidavit ballots. And then it's stick on June seventeenth in case we need a revote. Fingers crossed. Also on the ballot would be board member elections. We do have three seats. And those three seats, there are three candidates for those three seats. They will be in this order on the ballot. Michelle Grumoli, Robert Toman, and Christine Balroso. The candidate with the highest vote count will begin their term on May twenty-seventh when the board adopts or accepts the budget, okay? The second and third highest vote getters will start July first, okay? Because we do need to fill that vacant position. So with that, are there any additional questions?
She resigns her current seat. She takes the seat and then comes back on her normal seat.
There's still.
Percentage of our homes are in Woodstock and Ulster?
Um.
Boy, you're explaining that to me. Explain that, I don't, it's weird. She would actually have to resign.
It's only a small percentage of each.
So, so, yeah, I mean, I would. Like ballpark, no? It's small. We know small.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, that's something I'm not gonna guess at.
Okay. We wouldn't.
I'm sorry, what was that question?
The question was, what percent of our homes are in the town of Woodstock and Town of Ulster?
Oh.
I do not know that.
As far as taxable assessed value, 90, 90% is in Saward East.
Yeah. So, okay, so 10%.
10%.
Is in the, is in Woodstock and Town of Ulster.
Between those two.
Well, 10% of the assessed value.
Right.
Right.
Questions? Discussion?
Are we discussing this now? Are we talking about this?
Yeah.
This is not an executive.
No.
My, the reason for my asking the question simply comes down to.
In the mic?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Thank you?
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you. So I asked a question about the number of, of, you know, homes taxable, right, properties in the Town of Ulster, Woodstock, just because we're talking about voting. The prospect of voting here, we're also looking at the fact that they have a higher rate of tax per 1,000 dollars. But they've also been given, obviously, because they participate in our district, you know, equal billing in this presentation. So that, that adds some clarity for me. I, I guess it's all related to the budget, so I won't say my next question's unrelated, but can you just explain for us? Dr. Tim's made a really pointed, you know, expression of support for the fact that last year we did exceed the tax cap, and we did try to put forth a budget that exceeded the tax cap. And he, he definitely applauded the board for making that effort, and we certainly all commiserate, certainly much more than he does, that that didn't go through. But why would we not try to consider exceeding the tap, cap, cap again, given the fiscal picture that he had projected?
So, I mean, part of that, I guess, is me kind of tossing it back to the board to see where the board's comfort level is with that. Right? Again, if we do choose to exceed the tax cap, then every one of us at this table here are gonna have, put our boots on and go marching into the community and buzz up community sessions where everybody can kind of share the value that public education provides to our communities, such as Saward East, right, particularly where a high number of students do come back and live and reside and raise their families. So, you know, the risk of it is going down in the pre-voting, right? And then if you do it again, then you get down again. So, you know, but it comes, it comes down to the board's comfort in challenging that the tax cap and commitment that our community will support us.
What is the.
So I'm gonna just ask rhetorically for, I'm just gonna ask this question for, I guess it's not rhetorically, but put it out to my fellow board members. You know, we, we didn't anticipate what happened last year. We all accept that it wasn't the outcome we desired. What, what has changed that would make it more risky this year? The, the second budget vote, we had really overwhelming, resounding support for it. And I think that despite what we see here, right, like literally in attendance, thank you, folks. But I don't know that, there's a lot of conversation going on about this budget. Are we, are we running the same risk, or are we not running the same risk? Has we elevated the conversation at the, at the community level? Where they know that we're looking at, you know, a long-term fiscal plan that has to be developed? You know, my, again, my, my kind of questions are discussion-oriented, not really rhetorical. I think that there is fiscal value in exceeding the cap. I think it, when we did it last year, it barely went down. And, and every one of us, you know, agreed it barely went down, and some of us commiserated that we didn't put it up the same way it was the second time. So, you know, let's talk about where we are right now this year and what's changed and, and why we wouldn't try to do that again. Why is it more risky this year than last year?
I guess my question.
It was on. Yeah, you were on.
Okay.
Yeah, you were.
Thank you. I guess my question is the, is there a negative to taking from the reserves? Is there, is, is there a net negative to taking from the reserves versus going over the tax cap? That's kind of how I'm making my decision. Is there a negative to?
So reserves are our rainy day fund, right? Just like your own savings account in your house, right? If the hot water heater breaks, you gotta do a hot water heater, you have to take money on your savings account, right? It's less there for the future. You know, and I would not anticipate, right, during COVID, we had a huge cash flow from the federal government, New York State funded foundation aid, right? So we had cash flow at that point in time. I'm not sure that we're gonna have anything like that in the next couple of years.
Okay. Then my other question, I thought that this came up during Dr. Tim's presentation, are, is there a limit to how much we can have in the reserves?
So each reserve does have statutory kind of regulations that guide it.
Right.
As well as the way that the board approves a resolution. So there are, there are limits to reserves.
The, the question I think you're getting to is, in the unassigned, only allowed to have 4% unassigned.
Okay.
In your, in the unassigned one.
Correct.
That's, that's what, that's what he was pointing out.
Okay.
And no, we're, we're below that now, yeah.
Because what's, we have 4% of 9 million.
Right. It's 2.8 or something.
So what, so what's an instance? Let's just say in the, in the, you know, the conversation we're talking about, also waiting to hear from our insurance carrier. We're having conversations about having to create an additional insurance, you know, reserve to fund our own insurance. I wanna, I wanna formulate this question, and then I'll come back to it. I'm sorry. I do wanna formulate this question, because I have a gem there.
Talk slowly. So, I mean, it seems you're proposing, I mean, the proposing of raising the tax cap, the number was 500,000. I mean, that still doesn't get us there. So.
Yes, it doesn't.
Just an example of like, this is, with 500,000.
Yeah, so this is just, this is, you know, with previously, we can scale it up, we can scale it down. This was the number that we went with last time, so I kind of continued that kind of thought pattern. So if you didn't want to go above a million, you have to double it.
But we'd still have to then use 20, 2.2.
Yes, correct. Yes. Right? Whereas last time, after it went down, we made additional reductions to bring it down.
Right.
Right? This time, if we do do it, I would just say we should do, use less reserves.
Dan, I just wanted to clarify that the, the money from the unassigned fund balance is not the same as money that's used where we have to cover some of these insurance claims. Is that where we?
So if we were to create an insurance reserve, then we would recommend to take money out of other reserves.
Right.
To fill that reserve. Because the most we can have in that insurance reserve is 3% of our budget, which is gonna be like 2.4, 2.5 million dollars.
Right.
So we, so we could fund it up to that level by pulling money out of other reserves.
So different reserve balance.
And I'm just, and I'm just.
Well, we would take, I think, we would take money from one reserve, put it into this new reserve.
In new.
So the total would be the same.
Right.
Allocated differently.
Right.
Right? And once again, it would be in case something were to happen. Right? So you may spend it, you may not spend it.
Where did money come from that we had to spend out of pocket to cover some of our claims that went uncovered?
Okay, so I think your, so the question was, where did money come for?
Where does, that's not coming from the unassigned fund balance, right?
No, so all of our current claims are covered by our current insurance carrier, because we've had Utica, I want to say like 10 years at least, I'm not sure if it goes back longer, but like, on this sheet, right, we saw. So those are all covered by Utica, and they will be, continue to be covered by Utica, you know, until everything is closed with those claims. In the past, we did have CVA claims, Child Victims Act claims, in which the board authorized funds to cover those costs because we could not locate the insurance carrier from the time that it occurred.
Okay. Thank you. I guess what I was just trying to get, get my hands around and try to help everybody else understand is the use of the unassigned fund balance and why we would want to maintain it, you know, at a certain level, as opposed to use it for a budgetary, you know, again, it feels like, you know, kicking the can down the road. I've used it maybe too many times, but I'm, again, only as good as the best advice, right, that we can get. And, and I thought I heard Dr. Tim's say pretty clearly a few, a few things about how we should begin to project, you know, forward. Having said that, having said that, you know, we have to vote on a budget, but the superintendent has to, has to operate within this budget. You know, so other than kind of maybe trying to foster a little discussion about whether or not we want to exceed the cap or not, you know, I do think, obviously, the superintendent's recommendation has to be, has to be a strong consideration, too. So.
So I think Christine actually asked this question last year. So we took money out of, out of fund last year, and here we are again, taking more money out of the fund next year. So like, what does, what does next year look like for us if we don't go above that tax levy? Are we gonna be right back in the same spot again?
So, good, good, good question. So this, right, this current school year, we did appropriate 3 million dollars, hoping to spend very little of that 3 million dollars.
Yep.
So that money is there, kind of, to re-appropriate in a sense.
Right.
I will say, I do think we do need to look at our instructional model at the elementary level, right, for, to see how we can become even more efficient.
Because I mean, I just, I don't wanna, as Bill says, can down the road. I mean, then we're sitting here next year having this exact same conversation. I mean, either we need to go above the tax cap and have some more influx of money to try to start to offset that. And yes, okay, maybe we take a little bit, or whatever, out of, out of the balance, the unassigned fund balance, but at least it's, we're taking a lot less. And from what I understood with Dr. Tim's, with, with us going above the tax levy, that's all gonna compound as we move forward. You know, I'm not looking, like, right now, I'm looking also like five, 10, 15 years down the road at what it's gonna look like for Saward East, you know, as we sit here, like, well beyond my kids being out of this school.
I mean, there was 8 million dollars that we didn't, you know.
Yeah.
For the last decade.
Right.
Yes, exactly. That's, we need to kind of get back, hopefully back to that at some point. And, and not be having, you know, who do we cut, what do we cut conversations? And, and I think Dr. Tim's also said that a lot of other districts in the area have better reserves as well.
Correct.
Compared to us. So, I mean, clearly, we need to do something to kind of regain, you know, or at least get ourselves on a level, level playing field with some of those other districts. So, I mean, that's, that's kind of where I sit.
I will say, I did go through Ulster County Schools, look at their proposed budgets. I don't know if they've been adopted by the board yet or not, but the most recent presentations, and some of them are using a significant amount of reserves.
I'm sure.
As well this year.
I'm sure.
But, you know, you know, as I think I said last time, too, I think we are extremely efficient in our current model at the elementary level. I'm just highlighting that. So I do think we do need to kind of embark on that.
And did you, in looking at their budgets, are they going over the tax cap?
Not in Ulster County. Not that I'm aware of.
Well, just to echo other people's, it seems like for long-term fiscal responsibility, you know, I certainly would be okay with going over the tax cap, whether it's 500,000 dollars or a million dollars or something, it seems like. And otherwise, we'd have to cut things that, you know, some in the community have indicated they wanted, but didn't pass last year, so.
3.5 votes.
Right, but it didn't pass. So.
Right.
There are consequences that, you know.
Sure.
They said they wanted whatever, armed security, but if it doesn't pass, then we can't afford it. So, things like that.
Calder?
Thank you for saying something. It's not, you can't do it.
So, Dan, what is, what will the percentage increase be if we do increase by 500,000?
The, what do you mean, the percentage? I'm not sure.
So what are, because I think that's what people want to know, like, how much of their taxes is gonna go up if we add 500,000 or take?
Yep. So let me get to that.
2. whatever.
Dollars.
Okay, so a 300, a 300,000 dollar home in the town of Village of Saward East, right, their tax bill would go up 170 dollars. So if you have a 600,000 dollar home, I'm just gonna double it and get to 340 dollars. Right? So that would be the impact, the estimated impact on your, on your tax bill, if you had a 600,000 dollars, would be double that.
And comparative to the tax cap, that is like an additional 60 dollars based, right? For 39, whatever.
Right. So that, that's what I want to know. I want to know, like, what is the, and there's, I know it's in these slides somewhere.
Yeah, I think so.
Go back.
1,200,000 dollars.
Go back. It's on slide 18, and then the one that you just had. So it's 129.
So say 130 versus 178, so 40 dollars.
Okay.
On a 300,000 dollar home, so 600,000 dollar home would be 80, 80 dollars.
Which is a 4 dollar a month difference.
Yes, or 8 dollars in this 600,000 dollar home.
Which is my. Can you guys hear me back?
That would start here.
Not over the copier, we can't hear you.
I guess the question, or not the question, but something that Bill had asked, is what, you can't hear me now.
Can you guys hear her? Turn the other one off next to you. There we go.
All right. Is that better?
Can you guys hear me?
There you go. There we go.
I guess to answer Bill's question that he asked, I'm gonna try to see if I can give my perspective of where, he said, what is different this year than last year of going over the cap? And yes, it was only 34 votes. I appreciate that, and I, you know, I was dismayed that we couldn't get there last year. But if I look at this year versus last year, what is at stake if it, if we go to the, over the cap and it doesn't pass? What, we're gonna have to go through a revote, so there'll be a cost to that. And what is it costing the district? It's costing longer-term fiscal impact because we're taking more of fund balance. Like, I don't see us losing anything, or the district, the community losing anything if they vote this budget down. Like, last, that, last time, they were losing sports, they were losing field trips. Like, last, that last time, they were losing sports, they were losing field trips. There was a motivation last year to go above the cap that was impacting this year. I think it's, not that it's not worth an effort, but I think it's going to be a harder sell to tell people that we need to make this up because of sins of the past and we got to pay now for the, you know, for people, you know, for the way things were voted on in the past. It may be a tougher sell. I'm not saying maybe we shouldn't try it, but I'm just saying, from people, the state of the economy and where people are feeling a crunch in everyday expenses, to add to this when we're looking at the impact as really just our longer-term fiscal impact than the current year. I just, that's my perspective on it.
So, I voted last year to go above the cap. I actually voted last year to go more above the cap than we did in our conversations. But we, it got defeated, whether it was 34 votes, which I couldn't believe that night or not. It was defeated. I think the difference, people are asking what the difference is this year. I think it's part of the climate you're in. I think over the last 60 days, people's 401K accounts have been decimated, absolutely decimated. So now to go tell them on top of their 401Ks getting decimated, a good portion of sororities, we're also going to increase your taxes because seven or eight years ago, people went below the tax cap. I just don't think the time is right to do that. I also appreciate the fact that you need reserves. I also have a problem, a little bit of a problem, having, I think, a total of $15 million in reserves over all the accounts. And I know the capital reserve is the one you can't really touch, you can't do anything with except a capital project. But having, so I'll say $11 million in reserves and telling people that we're going to hold that and we're going to raise your taxes regardless of how much. Because one thing I did learn last year, and I tried to explain to people, whether it's $47 or $7 or $4,700, they don't care. Their taxes are going up. And yes, last year, the assessments for the town came out at a really awkward time.
Yeah.
But that's probably going to happen again this year or in and around there. And I think those things compound one another. So having those reserves, which is what they're for, I personally don't think, I also think if you're going to go at the cap and it gets rejected again, whether it's by four votes or 34 votes, it would be, it's a level of arrogance to go put that same budget back up and say, you beat, you defeated it this time, but let's try again, let's just try again. You're going to have to make cuts. You're going to have to show the people who voted down the increase in the tax cap that we're actually cutting things, which is the last thing I want to do. We need to start to get our district to where we're increasing things. And I think over the next two years or three years, they're increasing by the tax cap to get an extra $500,000 and still have to go tap your reserves. And the perception in the community, I think that's what's different. And if I look at our teaching force and the retirements that are coming and some other things that we're going to start talking about of how we do things a little bit more streamlined and a little bit more efficient over the next few years with how we're going to read, how we want to redesign some things in our district. While I appreciate Dr. Tim's perspective and giving us kudos for trying to go over the tax cap, I just think when you look at things at a macro level that are happening in the economy and happening overall, I don't want to go tell people that their taxes are going up. That's my perspective. I didn't really mean to turn the lights off in the room.
I'm just going to add, you know, my perspective because their taxes are going up irrespective with your budget. And again, it comes down to a majority or supermajority. You know, I'm not going to be here, right? I don't have any impact to my life, right, overall in terms of the budget that's being developed here. Meaning, I don't have any family here, I don't have any, no, that's not true. I have a nephew here, I don't have my children here. I'm not engaged in the sports community, right, I'm not connected. So if the tenor and the sentiment, you know, that led to the groundswell and overwhelming positive vote the second time around has dissipated, you know, that, you know, quickly in the calendar year, I'm going to trust the people that are out there talking to the community and the school, you know, when they say they don't have the stomach for that this year. But I think that along the same lines, and not to get too macro, but I think that when we think about the way decisions are being made, you know, nowadays in the economic climate that is causing so much distress, I think having a long-term fiscal plan, all right, that seeks to right some of the wrongs of the past isn't necessarily a scary idea. It might be one that people take some comfort in, rather than thinking that we're just going to do this, you know, pull a string and change, you know, the kind of orientation and the mentality that we have. That's not a direct repudiation to anybody's sentiment. I will support whatever the consensus of the board is. I just know that, you know, you don't often have this opportunity. In fact, once a year, you do.
Yeah, and I am one who, I am fully on coming up with a long-term plan. And I think we need it. I guess my difference is, I don't think going over the tax cap is your fix-it button for the long-term plan. Because you're still going to tap into reserves. You're still going to have to tap into the reserves pretty heavily. So I think the benefit you get, like I said, I think the one thing that Dr. Tim's wasn't looking at, while, because I loved a lot of things he said, he also wasn't privy to a lot of information of things that you want to do more efficiently in this district, which doing things more efficiently, sizing the district correctly, the amount of retirements that are coming over the next few years, those are the things that need to be the cornerstone of your long-term financial plan and not the raising of a tax cap to eliminate taking, and I agree with you, Bill. The one thing I do agree with you, regardless, at the tax cap or above the tax cap, people's taxes are going to rise. I mean, that's a given. But I just think, and I agree, not going too macro, I just think in the economic impact that people have already had, asking an additional increase in their taxes to right the wrongs of things that happened nine years ago, when it is not the magic button. There are many more things that need to happen. I just don't think the environment is right to do it right now. That's my opinion, and there's eight of us here, and I will go with the sentiment, the majority sentiment, so.
Well, I guess, just to go back to Dr. Tim's presentation, I guess, if, I guess I feel more comfortable dipping into the reserves the full amount if you had sort of a bit of a plan that said, okay, this will wean us off the reserves in the next three years, and it's like a short-term thing. But it doesn't seem, as of today, we have any document that gets us off relying on the reserves every year. I guess that's where we are today. And so maybe there's an efficiency plan or some other thing that can rightsize the district. But absent that, it just, it seems, it seems hard to just have the reserves be the fallback, so.
How common is that in other districts to use $2 to $3 million in their reserves for their budget?
I don't know, I mean, across the state, what it is. The ones that I was looking at today, I mean, I think Rennett's using several billion dollars this year with big cuts.
$7 million.
No, no, sorry.
Several, several.
Several, oh, okay.
They're using like 3.25 million. So it's not underver enough to use reserves or fund balance.
And did I hear, and just, and this is a clarification, I don't know if I heard you correctly. Nobody else in Ulster County is going over the cap?
Not to my knowledge, last time I knew, that's my answer, everybody. Trying to go over the tax cap is very rare in New York City in general.
We were alone in that respect last year also, right?
We were one of, one of the handful, well, maybe two dozen or so.
Oh, yeah, I remember that statement, article about that. One of the very few, yeah.
So is this a call-to-question moment? You made a recommendation for your budget, right?
Yep.
So is this a call-to-question moment, then?
Yeah.
Do we have the final figure then, again? Plug it in? I'm going to drive this, but we could get this over Suter. Just want to give everyone an opportunity.
Budget resolution is after executive session.
Oh, Seth, oh, yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, no, I don't want to.
Okay, so we're still only at presentation stage.
Yeah, I don't want to.
I apologize.
That's okay.
I apologize, I thought we were ready to rock and roll here.
Bill wants to go home.
Listen, I got Big Newton waiting.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Ursicov. Moving on to board action items. We have the Riccardi Elementary School State Environmental Quality Review Act, the resolution of it. Make a motion to accept that.
Don't move.
Seconded by Ms. Keldre, any discussion, any questions on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, moved. Next item is the Ulster Board of Cooperative Educational Services. This is the admin budget. And Dr. Ursicov, I'm correct, this has been taken into account.
Correct, so we've already budgeted for this.
We've already budgeted for this. So this is just the approval of the admin budget for BOSI's. Motion to accept, Ms. Belarosa, seconded.
Second.
Mr. Meyer, any discussion, questions?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment that there was a very compelling graph that I saw a couple of years ago about this budget, and it would be great to see it graphically. So for people who were, you know, wondering about the amount, and that goes for the BOSI's budget as well, as well as our budget, the lion's share, or not the lion's share, because the lion actually eats all of it, is retirement health insurance. So people have problems with their taxes going up and budgets. I hope they're all out there advocating for single-payer healthcare because healthcare costs are the bulk of that budget.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the next one is the annual election of the members of the Board of Cooperative Educational Services, BOSI's. There are, there are basically four seats. The two that are listed in the agenda, Barbara Carroll and Lucy Van Sickle, those are for New Paulson Roundout Valley, they are running unopposed. So in essence, we actually don't have to give them a vote, but we would. The other two seats are at large, and they are out of four different candidates. Willie Bruce Jr. out of Ellenville, Alison Dodd from Antioa, Suzanne Jordan from Kingston, and David Thompson from New Poles. We have to pick two of those people. My recommendation would be for Willie Bruce from Ellenville. He's been instrumental in BOSI's, he's part of their, put together a big part of their PTech program, so he's very familiar with them. And then Suzanne Jordan from Kingston, who's a longtime, was a longtime board member in Kingston.
And a teacher before that.
And a teacher before that. So those would be my two recommendations out of those four. And when we vote, we're only, even though we're all voting, we only cast one vote for them. So it's not like seven votes for them. It's the sororities vote gets to go to them. Is that correct? Dr. Ursicov, yeah.
Do we second your nomination?
No, we would, I would, we would make a motion to accept those four people, and then somebody would second it, and we'd vote. So do I have a motion for those four individuals?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Keldre, seconded by Ms. Aresari. Any discussion or question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, proposed to recess into executive session. Resolve, the board would, would accept the motion to recess into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel items and employment of a particular person.
Don't move.
By Ms. Keldre, seconded by Mr. Wells. Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And we will be coming back out to vote.
Yes, we will. Those two, yes. Two that are running on the podium.
Yep.
The sorority votes.
Close your glasses, Tim?
Yeah. I know what you're still.
I feel like it's going to end in like two and a half weeks.
Yeah, come in.
I'm supposed to be in North Carolina this week, though, so I'm very glad.
It does mean, like, I'm in a virtual conference.
Let's talk to people, maybe. Okay.
That's not as fun. Yes.
Good for them, too.
I know.
Good color choice.
I know, I noticed that.
Playing that wild.
When you sat down.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, that's awesome. Good for you, Maggie. Good to see you.
Hey. Good. I went to Italy, so I was on a run. But, yeah. Oh, really? That's so funny.
Everybody's going to Italy.
I'm like, just some pushovers. Man, I'm like 30 years old with this.
Right, so. Enjoy your day tomorrow.
Did you go to Mickey's or Sawyer's?
Sawyer's.
Okay.
It was expensive for a kitty cone.
Jess and I went that one day after like her basketball game at her school. It was me, her, and her sister, $20.
Yeah, I got a kitty cone with rainbow sprinkles, it was $5 and something. I was surprised.
How do you go?
How does a family go out for ice cream?
Oh.
Yeah. Crazy. It was good, though. I'm happy I did it.
Birthday, yeah.
Yeah.
I saw it, yeah, like, all the time.
It was definitely. It was definitely.